May I have a roll call, please, for now?
Mayor Futter?
Here.
Ms. Dara?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Musk?
President.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Here.
We're all here. First on the agenda is approval of the March seventeenth Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the longest minutes in the world?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, we're gonna have a couple of changes tonight in the agenda. The first item's been removed completely, which is the U-Haul vehicles. The second item, proposed final site plan, has been tabled. Alright, so number one on the agenda tonight will be the proposed sign replacement for Stuff 'n Puffs. Someone here?
Yes.
Why? We don't have no chairs. We need chairs there for you. Thanks, Bill.
I thought they were gonna put that. I thought they were gonna put that. I thought it was kinda cool, because it reminded me back of the W. N. Rasmussen remnant. I felt sorry for her when she was there.
Okay. Are you Felix?
No, I am not Felix. I'm Sam Broda. I'm Stuff 'n Puffs general manager.
Oh, Sam Broda. Okay.
Or vapormate's general manager.
Alright. Alright. Do we have anything from our planner, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a memo dated June seventh. Would you like me to read from that?
Please. I'm sorry, but I, my secretary's on vacation. I didn't get a copy of those, so I would love that you would read it, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, June seventh memo, Stuff 'n Puff wall sign replacement. The applicant's requesting a new wall sign. The size of the sign was not identified on the plan. That's for their tenant space located at seven seventy-five East Aurora Road. This, the original sign was approved in two thousand twelve by the Planning Commission, which was a four-by-sixteen or sixty-four square foot wall sign for this particular space. Essentially, what the applicant's doing is adding an additional message on the sign. Vapormate, the real electronic cigarette. And the size of the sign doesn't appear to be increasing. The sign is located in a plaza that does have signage requirements, approved signage requirements. Those are dated November third, two thousand five, and those were amended in two thousand twelve. Based on the proposal, the only minimal comments I have is that the building or the tenant frontage for this particular space is forty feet, which entails an eighty square feet of signage. If the new size, new size of the sign is the same or below the eighty square feet, then the request can be approved. The applicant should confirm this with the Planning Commission. The, I also note at the bottom that, again, the plan was amended in two thousand twelve to include orange and yellow colors, in addition to the already permitted red and blue. So the colors of the sign are permissible.
Sign is gonna be the same square footage. Nothing's changing the size. They're gonna take out, take out this beat-up sign that's in there now and replace it with the sign that we're proposing.
Very good. I don't imagine there's any other comments, Dennis, engineering. How about comments from the commissioners? Anything? Questions?
Besides that it looks like a chicken instead of a dragon.
You heard me.
I thought that's what it was when I came to work there about four weeks ago, so.
Everything's going good there?
Everything's going well.
Good.
She's an amazing boss. Different type of business than I've ever been in, so.
Yeah.
I don't smoke cigarettes. I don't smoke electronic cigarettes, but it's a very interesting business.
I, I think I would be interested. I need to stop in there someday and just see what you still have.
We can't say that it'll stop you from smoking cigarettes, but if you do smoke cigarettes, it seems to help a lot of people.
I've seen that, but I don't indulge for forty years.
We don't carry any marijuana in the store at all. We all get drug tested there, so that's the way she wants it, and that's one of the reasons why I came over.
Well, that's good for me to know. That's good. Alright.
And if you look under thirty, they're gonna card you, so.
Okay. That's a good thing. Alright. Although, I'll never look that again. Now, any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the applicant and the, yeah, as submitted?
Motion and second, and the other discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bingo. There you go. Good luck to you.
Thank you, counsel.
Alright. Now, we're the commissioners. But one council person's here. Alright, you too. Alright, next, we're gonna go to the proposed alteration to the site plan to include a sidewalk alignment for design molded plastics. Hi, how you doing? Haven't seen you in a while. I see your product all the time.
Yeah, and we enjoyed the Caliphi news.
Well, that's something.
It was great. Thanks for the reminder to be part of that.
Yeah. It did well. Proud of you. Good business. Okay. Hi. How you doing? Alright. Are you Felix?
Yes.
Alright. Do you have, do you have Felix's information?
I have the contact of the commission, yeah.
Alright. Now, planner. First, comments from the planner?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Engineering, we had some.
The project is currently under construction and was previously approved by the Planning Commission. The purpose of this submittal is to make an alteration to the sidewalk route from the new parking lot to the building addition. The previously approved plan for the sidewalk connection appears on sheet C-120, keynote number twelve, of the submitted plans, northwest corner of the building adjacent to detention pod. The revised proposal, proposed sidewalk is located in the city of Macedonia right-of-way. Bavaria Road currently has no sidewalk within the right-of-way within the city of Macedonia. Sidewalk does exist on the south side of Bavaria Road within the city of Twinsburg. If Planning Commission approves the proposed sidewalk layout, the issue of future maintenance of the sidewalk needs to be addressed, since it is located within the city of Macedonia right-of-way.
Alright. So that's from the engineer. Anybody else? Nope. Alright. Commissioners? Question? Comments?
As far as maintenance is concerned, what about any legal responsibility?
I can't answer that question.
I know. Neither can I.
Yeah.
Maybe it was a different comment about, about the law department.
Well.
Like who's gonna be responsible to show the litigant?
You know, that's a good question. I can't answer that. When this was submitted, Dennis, was there anything that brought to mind that this is going to require any legal input? I mean, it's a sidewalk.
Nothing. I mean, other, if you have a sidewalk in front of your house, a lot of times it's in the right-of-way and you're responsible for the maintenance.
Yeah. We have a problem with that.
No, we would have said the same.
Because you have land, you take care of the property anyhow, right?
Actually, you might start a good practice. I'd love it.
You might just send me bar for the rest of it.
Yeah. You, you do. That's good. Alright. Any other questions? Comments? They will take care of it, and that's in the minutes now, and it recorded, so.
Re-complet.
Yeah. Well, that's nice. Glad you're doing it. Anybody else? Yeah, it's nice to have a sidewalk there. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the applicant, applicant's request as submitted, admitting the fact that they will maintain the sidewalk.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds. So we got a second and a third. That's really good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bingo. See ya. Good seeing you. Alright. Take care. We'll walk on it as soon as it's done, alright?
Three inches to evolve.
Okay. Alright. Next is proposed signage for Momentum Christian Church. Yes, would you come forward, please? And planner's comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated June eighth regarding the proposed signage. The applicant's requesting to replace an existing ground monument sign located at seventeen seventeen East Aurora Road. The proposed sign area is four feet by eight feet or thirty-two square feet and is seven and a half feet tall. Included in the total sign area is electronic mess, is an electronic message center or dynamic display. Just note that there's two different signs, it looks like, that may have been proposed. One's a three-by-eight sign, and the other one is a four-by-eight sign, so I'm not entirely clear as to what that proposal is, if it's maybe an alternative sign. But the electronic message sign appears to be, the electronic message center portion appears to be the full four-by-eight, and that's something that needs to be confirmed by the applicant. As you know, the, the code, section eleven seventy-nine oh nine, limits the display of electronic messages, message portion of the sign to thirty percent of the sign copy. So that is a concern. Also, the signs being proposed in a residentially zoned district, and the, the code specifically states, under eleven seventy-nine oh nine B-one, that dynamic displays or electronic message centers are not permitted in residential districts. So to carry the project forward, the applicant would need to seek a variance from the border zoning appeals for that portion, and if the sign display, the electronic message center portion, does not equal thirty percent or less of the copy, the total copy of the sign, they would need to seek a variance for that as well. All the sort of performance criteria outlined in eleven seventy-nine, eleven seventy-nine point oh nine, with regard to the height of the letter, the lettering on the sign, whether the sign itself remains, has static images with a static display instantaneous from one image to another, that information is not supplied at this time. And so, at this point, I recommend that the Planning Commission table the request. We do need more information, but also, more importantly, the, the border zoning appeals will have to take up this matter, as it is located in a residential, residential district, and that is not a permitted use in that district. And also, just wanted, for the applicant's sake, I looked at my memo. The other important item is, the city, through a lot of debate when we talked about electronic message centers, made a very conscious decision to not allow full video display in any of the electronic message centers. So if that is something that's being requested, that would also need to be something they would have to request from the border zoning appeals. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
So, there's, you need to, we spent a long time, I think it was two years, coming up with the sign ordinance. Alright, that sign ordinance is in effect. And there was a lot of good input from that, from people that are experts even in universities. Alright? So, the display of the sign, the size of the letters, all of these things have to be within those specs, so I would suggest you look at that ordinance. I would also suggest that you, I, I don't think you're gonna have a problem there, alright? Because there is one for the golf center, however, that's city property right there, because we have the road. That's a little different, kinda, in a way, but I don't think you'll have a problem, because it's not like there's help right there by it. Also, if you could consider using brick, you have such a pretty Western Reserve building. Alright? And then you have it on this kinda modernistic-looking sign, of course, but usually, when signs are done, we want brick on the bottom of it, because then it looks Western Reserve, and it'll go real good with the building. Alright? So, why don't you consider doing all those things, looking into it for this evening? Do I have a motion to table?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I actually thought that tonight was just about getting approval for the non-digital sign, the non-LED, and then that I was going to the zoning commission, which I have a date for, for the LED sign. And so, because we've had lots of conversations about what the exact process was. So, tonight, it was really more for the Plan B, like, let's get approval, so we submitted and paid to have them submitted, so that we could at least have this one in case we don't get approval for the LED.
Are you alright with brick?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
In fact, it can even be that though. Polvic brick. Some of that stuff's made pretty well, looks real good, without having to put a foundation or anything in it.
Yep, absolutely.
Alright. So, now we know why there was too dry.
That's all right.
The only thing is, too, you would have to have it, if the sign is, what, that was six foot, six inches high, would we have to be six foot, six inches off of the driveway?
Yeah, it's, it's twenty-one feet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're in good shape. You're in good shape there. You can have, alright. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
The only other issue is still the area issue. Area of signs in residential district are held to twenty square feet, and this is twenty-four square feet, the, the non-digital one. It's three-by-eight.
Why don't you see what size you got there? Do you know what size you have?
Yeah, we have, it's eight foot wide, seven, six high, but it's actually smaller than the ones there right now.
See?
The ones there now is nine foot wide and seven, eight high. So each, you know, it's, it's a foot shorter in width and two inches shorter in height than the ones there right now.
Yeah, that's, you know, the way the code is written, you're limited to twenty square feet.
Sure. Again, too, if you had houses there with you, so I would appeal that at the same time.
And that's not counting base, basis, so you're saying it's shorter to the sign itself and still eight by three is what he's calculating? Not worried about that or how high? There's limitations on that, and it's, this face, right?
Yeah. So if you did six wide by three, you'd have eighteen square feet. It'd be permissible. Or six and a half wide, you'd still be at nineteen and a half square feet. So if you just reduce the width of it, you'll, you'll meet the code requirement, rather than reducing the, the height of the, the message area, which will reduce your letter size, which may, make it a little more difficult.
Alright, so you will have to come back if you're going to pursue it, or we can, we can approve it, but under those circumstances, that you may get that size. However, if you're going to the BCA, you could always ask them. Alright, so we could just table it tonight, or we could approve it with conditions?
Yeah, 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 we could approve it with the understanding that we get it down to that requirement.
Okay. Alright. So we have that in record? Alright. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright. Anybody else?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So, are the widening plans for the road through there, have they gotten to that point where they know where the road's gonna be?
Well, actually, the road right there isn't gonna be three lanes.
It's like, is it gonna stay two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right by the.
So, they're not gonna lose any front?
Yeah, there was a traffic study done by this engineering firm. I'm not sure if that was your guys or not, but, but it came out that the traffic doesn't warrant three lanes right there. And so that's what we're doing. Anything else?
There's some engineering comments as well.
The comment about a temporary sign or a sign you have now? You were getting, you thought you were coming here for something else?
No, we've, we've submitted a, a sign that doesn't have a digital display and then one that does.
Right. Okay.
And there's a sign there now for the previous church.
Right.
Alright. Check them out. We need you to read those?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
A site plan will need to be provided showing the proposed location of the signage in order to determine if there are any engineering issues with the proposed signage change.
Well, now we got a problem. I don't think we can. Do we need that site plan, or can we make it part of an approval? Dennis?
They could turn it in with the rest Monday, make the revisions to it.
Revisions?
Yeah.
Alright. So there's three conditions.
Okay.
Alright. So now, anybody else?
Have anything else?
Uh-uh.
Alright. Do I have a motion? We have to talk a lot.
Yeah. What, are we accepting?
Well, what we'll do is we'll approve it. We'll approve the sign with, the improvements has been suggested, the size, the brick.
And the site plan.
And we want it to draw.
They have, they have a site plan here, they just need to mark where the signs are gonna go on it.
Yeah.
Alright.
They submit, just don't show the location where it's being proposed, but if they confirm that it's within, you know, six and a half feet from the right-of-way, all they do is just simply mark it on the plan appropriately.
Alright.
If I can suggest, I think we have a lot of issues with this sign right now, and I think he needs to come back with the, if we submit it, in order for us to approve it.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. He tabled this for the sign until he comes back with all the suggestions to put in place tonight.
Second.
It's going where the existing sign was, correct?
Yeah.
And that's on your map here? Did you see that on there? It's going right where, where the other sign was.
That's fine. I just, these guys have several issues with it, and I think we need to get that all resolved before we, we approve it.
We have a motion. I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Could you do that for us, and please, and bring it back?
And so, when, when does that happen, or what does the process be?
A month.
A month, okay.
I don't think you need our approval to go to the BCA.
No, they've already scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
See, so you, you're gonna be going to them, and then when you come back here, it might be for the whole ball. Alright?
Yeah, you should probably come back either if BCA turns you down, and you're coming back with this one, but size change, brick, label this as proposed, sign location. If they give you okay, then it's some form of this, but there's some more information before we're dimensioning, so we can tell if it's thirty percent or not.
So you have to go to BCA anyway, and then a couple weeks, another one here, and then you should be ready to go.
So my, my question for timing is, we're, we're trying to launch on September seventh, which, you know, if we end up going with the non-digital sign, that's, that's, you know, a month more of not having our permanent sign out there, which of course, loses credibility and all that. So the thing I struggle with is just.
What do you have in September?
We, we actually launched the new church. Like, right now, we're not, it's not launched yet. We've just merged with the, the other churches existing there.
I see.
And so, we're kind of in a pre-launch phase till September seventh, and so, so just losing time to actually get a sign out there for the purpose of, but, I'm not, I'm not really sure, like, visually, what, like, does the drawing need to include brick, other than the, you know, verbally saying?
It should, it should show it on there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you could make the whole thing brick, which would be better than just what you have. But again, whole brick's alright.
Yeah.
Are you looking just to do a sign change, to replace what's there temporarily?
Well, not temporarily, in the sense of just till September seventh or anything, like, we wanted to go and get a new sign, or just revisibility sake as soon as we can, so, so yeah, so I'm, I'm new to the process, but my admin's, you know, gone back, back and forth several times to kind of get prepped for this. So I, I actually thought this one wouldn't have any trouble at all, if we, I figured with the brick thing, we'd have to kind of verbally, you know, consent to that or whatever, but, but just to lose a few weeks potentially to get the sign, for the sake of the visual of the brick, you know, the, having the site map where the sign is now, and that kind of thing. I mean, it, it would be incredible, obviously, if we could be able to kind of get this one moving forward with the approval.
Well, we have a very good and efficient building department, so you, you, you got about a month. That'll be July. So that still gives you all, most of July, all of August. And we do have a motion that's been passed.
Yep.
Alright. So we'll see you back, and we'll get it all done, and you should be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there was, we did, so, right?
Yes.
Okay. It wasn't just a motion.
Yeah, it, it was.
Good reaction, so.
Yeah, there were no names. Alright. Now, we're going into the proposed facade modification for Mastoni Commons. Hi. You've got a nice can. Since the last time I saw you. Alright. This was almost, in, in my recollection, done because the Planning Commission asked you to do this for us, so that we can deal with this issue of the one business. So, is there anything from planning or engineering? Because basically, it's just saying that we can do what he wants to do, because now we're getting it from the owner of the development, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I have a memo dated June eighth. If you'd like me to read it, it's my understanding that, that is what's being requested for all of the commons, to, to change three, what I would call three more significant changes for the common, for the commons shopping plaza. The, the applicant is requesting, again, those three changes are changing the maximum height of, of the signs for major retail stores from sixty to seventy-two inches, changing the maximum height of signs for miscellaneous retail stores from thirty to thirty-six inches, and the third thing, allowing the tenant to choose the color of the sign face, as opposed to being held to only white letters for the major retail stores and red letters for the miscellaneous retail stores. My, my comments regarding those, those proposed changes, felt that the, the change in the lettering height really was not a significant issue, and just suggested that the city architect review it, just to sort of confirm that the architectural look, if you will, the, the sign and how it sits on the building facade is appropriate. But the issue regarding the color, in my opinion, was more of a significant change, and it seems to alter the intent of providing a uniform color scheme throughout the, the commons plaza. This was agreed to in nineteen ninety-four between the city and developer, and decided that regulating the color of the signs was important, and wanted to maintain what I would consider a high level of aesthetics for the development. I just noted, this issue of regulating color seems to continue to come up as we talk about signage in Macedonia and, quite honestly, throughout the country, and whether cities have the ability to regulate colors of signs that are trademarked. And I just note in my report that the Ninth Circuit Court and the Second Circuit Court have differing opinions about whether color can be regulated with trademarked logos, and so I suggested that if the city desires to maintain color regulations for signs in, in the commons, that they obtain a legal opinion from the law director. Otherwise, if there's not an issue, then the Planning Commission can work with the property owner to come to an agreement about what colors are acceptable, or if, or if it's acceptable to allow each tenant to choose whatever colors they want.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that you deal with over a period of time is, you should learn from experience that the distance you are away from the street should regulate the sign height, so people can see it easier. The colors make it so that there's a safety factor involved, because if you can recognize and read the sign from the street, and you can recognize the color, you're spending less time with your eyes off the road, more time with your eyes on the road. So as far as I'm concerned, we have already let some color changes happen in other parts of the community. When you started that commons up, and that was done, it was a showpiece. But now we have practicality of people not being able to find the stores as easy as But now we have practicality of people not being able to find the stores as easy as they should and that creates a safety hazard. So those are my feelings, now that, anybody else?
Color wise, it would be nice, I mean, it says any colors for signage in the commons. Allow the stores to whatever colors they want or have. The only trouble with that is they, they should still have to come here so we can approve the color.
Oh, yeah.
Because you could end up with, with an array of colors that are shocking.
Right, I think, I think we're, we're just approving what's submitted, right? And, and you don't, you're going to have a wide open spectrum, but they still have to come here, am I correct? No matter what they say, if they say, right, orange is okay and it comes here and we say no, then that takes precedence.
So what we've proposed as far as the modification to the sign plan, the colors will be subject to commission approval?
Well, any sign has to come to us. Especially if you're changing it. You might change fa, you could do that sign remain the same, still have the company. Alright, color.
Somebody comes in with a yellow, we could approve it because.
You didn't have?
You didn't have that in here, it said, said only red and brown, correct, by that is like a minimum, correct. But then our architectural technique view, that kind of thing, we can, we could restrict something else, but for the most part, it's something really crazy.
Well, actually, we approved this, one that's in the point of contention right now, but we didn't have your approval. So now you've shown us that you're willing to go along with that, so in the future, that'll help us make a decision. But I think Bill's got a point and we'll address that here. But any signage change, you still have to come before planning, just like the other guy did with the church or any of the other. Okay. Anything else?
What about the modification of the facade?
I thought we already did that, Dennis, didn't we?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Can we talk it over?
Okay, so that's the modification facade from five feet to six feet, which would increase the height of the sign.
Right, I don't see a problem with that.
Thirty to thirty-six is not a problem.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have a problem with, well, you, we won't have a problem, you won't have a problem either, but now another store is gonna say, well, I want different colors than I have now. They have red now, like they're supposed to, but now you're letting everybody pick their colors. You're gonna have a, somebody that's been there from the beginning say, wait a minute, then I want these colors instead of the old colors.
Very true, but for the sake of argument, if they're doing real good business and they're still there, maybe they don't want to spend the money on a sign and they just say, I'm doing fine, what do I need a new sign for?
It's their choice, I guess they can come back.
Then they can come back, right. Sounds good.
Do I have motion, yes?
Would we need to modify what was submitted as far as the revisions to the sign plan and the language here?
No, no, yours is good.
So it can be chosen by the tenants, subject to approval, the commission?
There you go. I don't, do we need to include that in the, that modification?
I, I would recommend that, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so this'll, this'll be contention. On you putting that in there, so we'll put that in as part of the motion. Do I?
Does the word major come into play, major retail come into play in on a, did you sign package?
And what defines major retail?
Yes, that is defined earlier in the document.
No, square footage?
Major retail stores are defined as stores which have a brick facade and a sign area, a brick background.
That's everything.
Yep.
While some of the other stores here, as shown, this would be considered a major, but as we're showing here.
Oh, I see what you mean where the brick goes.
So this is a major and this is considered, I don't know, it's just a, just a regular.
Here, did everybody see this? Looks good, actually it looks more western reserved because they put that in there. Anything else?
So majors defined as the brick background and then just miscellaneous stores that have this background of proposing.
Got it.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments?
So you've got, I guess you changed in both those spots because you got the two colors, you got the major and the miscellaneous. Don just referred to it as two different spots, we can just insert the subject.
Do I have motion?
Motion to approve with the addition of the language as discussed.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, keep that tan going, look over.
Yes, sir. Do you know that a lot of them are gonna be bringing some awnings like this to them, some and the other, just there?
No, the only awnings that have been approved would come for this group for the elders to the convention.
Alright, I was just wondering.
That's actually part of their look, you know, whereas other stores don't really have the awning look, but I've seen some.
I think it looks sharp.
Yeah, I've seen some shopping, uh, shopping centers that did look sharp.
Yeah, I, I think it looks very sharp.
So it's gonna be fine for this one and who knows, maybe in the future, somebody else will do it. But I think you'd have to do it as a whole, if you do anything other than this one. Alright?
Okay.
Sound good?
Yes.
We have motion approved?
Second.
And you're working on your tan, right?
Right.
Alright, see you later, thank you. And thanks for working through my office.
Thank you very much, we appreciate this.
Alright, next we have a proposed revision, oops, no. I'm one behind. The next one, we've asked for that to be tabled, that's proposed conditional site plan approval.
For Highland Point Parkway, is that what you're?
Correct.
Tabled?
Tabled.
Okay.
Alright, any other business tonight?
Alta.
Alta, yes.
That is the next item on the agenda, I believe.
Oh, no wonder, I thought I was reading the same thing, but that was you, I'm sorry. See what happens? We almost went right by it, come on down. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I need a motion to bring Alta off of the table items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you are, at the table.
So, what we're, I'm coming back for is that Alta, I was here prior to this, in the last meeting, I was here at the last meeting.
Yes.
And that there was an issue with the size of the sign.
Yes.
And our sign, we are considered a major tenant because we're on a brick facade.
Yes.
We have a forty-eight inch letter, which is per the sign criteria that it's been submitted to the city, kind of like nineteen ninety-four. And we have white letters.
There's two here.
And if you have any questions, go ahead and have the answer.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was, right, your issue was the height, the color?
Yeah, the, at this point, given the action of the planning commission, the sign's acceptable with one still requiring one modification. The side returns will need to be bronze instead of warm brick. Yeah, because the, the sign criteria that you just approved and amended still maintains bronze side returns.
We will comply with that requirement, not a problem whatsoever.
Then, Mr. Mayor, then the sign is approvable as submitted.
We have, do I have a motion to approve with that condition?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bingo.
Thank you very much.
Now, you can work on your tan too.
Tanning is not good.
No. I know.
My wife had a melanoma about fifteen years ago.
Yeah, you don't tan.
We don't go out in the sun.
No, that's smart, but try and tell that people, right?
I don't know how old you are, but I'm sixty-four years old.
Sixty-seven.
Okay, and we used to go outside and put baby oil iodine on it. To get a better tan.
Oh, sure, right.
Reflectors and everything like that, we didn't know any better.
No. Alright, thank you. Any other business tonight? Hearing on, do I have motion to adjourn?
Sure, here you go.
So moved.
I thought nobody was gonna do that.
No, you stick around.
We have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.